Meeting called to order.
All right, public speaker.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the open public meeting app, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 16th, 2025, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now on special vet applications from Recreation Director Leisha Floyd.
Good evening. This evening, there were five returning applications and four wedding applications. Are there any questions, comments?
No questions.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
We're now on to matters from the City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Nothing for me, other than good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
I also have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Uh, nothing.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Yes, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to matters from the acting city manager.
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
And matters from the city attorney.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to a presentation by Ezio Altomera and Eric Nemeth for the 2023 Safety Incentive Program Award.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, governing body, mayor, and council members. Councilor. Deputy city manager. My name is Ezio Altomera. I'm the risk manager for the city of Asbury Park. We represent the city when it comes to insurance and insurance matters, safety. Tonight, I'm here to present with actually my associate Matt and with Eric Nemeth, who is the attorney from our administrative arm of the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. So I proudly present to the mayor and council, for the seventh year in a row, you've achieved the safety award. This year, you were awarded, actually, it's for 2023, you were awarded a check for $500. We have the plaque to present to you, mayor, on behalf of us as your risk managers and the administrative arm of the Joint Insurance Fund for keeping a safe community, for adhering to all the practices that the Joint Insurance Fund requires. Quarterly meetings, which we'll be here in two weeks for that, cyber security, a lot of safety incentives that the town has hit, and therefore we award them again, seven years in a row. The city of Asbury Park is a very safe community. All your residents are in good shape with this governing body. So let's hear for our governing body. Congratulations, Captain Moore. Good evening, Mayor. Congratulations. Nice to see you. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
We're now on to a presentation by Pamela Major for the Mercy Center.
Hi, everybody. Hello. I'm going to call you Mr. Mayor tonight, okay? So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council, and thank you for squeezing me in. I know that these agendas tend to be very full, so I certainly appreciate being able to come here this evening. So for the past four years, I've been a consultant with Mercy Center, working directly with their domestic violence, sexual violence programs, and building a relationship with the faith community, because we know that the faith community is a place where people tend to lean on when they're having struggles. And we want to begin to bridge our relationship with the faith community and with city councils. And what we are doing is hosting, and many of you have come to our events. We host events in October for domestic violence awareness and in April for sexual assault. And this April, we'll be having an event directly at Mercy Center on April 24th and giving you more information. Why we want to come to you tonight is we have four faith communities directly in Asbury Park: Trinity Church, Second Baptist Church, St. Stevens, and the Rebirth Church that have been working with us over the past several years. We are reinvigorating our packages so that the churches have the information and can actually be satellite or, dare I say, sanctuaries for women that have been victims of domestic and sexual violence. And I had to look it up again just to see, you know, it's only been just over 30 years where women or wives, where it's considered rape, considered sexual assault if their spouse violates them sexually. It's only been just over 30 years that that has been a nationwide concern. And one in four or five women has been the victim of sexual assault. And I know that's not something that this council wants to see continued. And I know that this city, because we're a city that really wants health for everyone and safety for everyone. And so as we have this information, as we have these packages, we want to make you, we want to make you aware that this information will be available. We can certainly have information at City Hall, but also being able to direct people, this is where you can get information. This is where all the places that can give you help. Often, women leave their dwellings with the shirts on their backs. Sometimes, they can't even take their children with them. And when they leave, and everybody knows how grants work, you can buy certain things and you can't buy other things. Mercy Center can buy a bed, but they can't buy sheets. They can't buy the basic household items that people need. And we're doing a drive right now at the, and donation centers are at Asbury Park Library, Cathedral, I'm sorry, we have five treasures, Cathedral International by the Shore. You know, you probably reach for a dish detergent and don't even think about it. These women that are driven out of their homes, often they have to use soap for bathing, for washing their dishes, for everything, because they leave with nothing. And so we are also looking for donations. Like I said, the Asbury Park Library has the list and has a donation bin, and we're doing this work up through March 15. So we are going to give you more information about the activity on April 24th at the Mercy Center, where we're asking everybody in the city to wear teal and blue, because these are the colors of sexual assault as well as children's, this is also a children's assault month. So we want to come together as community-wide in every aspect, and we're coming here to give you this information. We'll be sending more paper information so that you can look over it in your own time, but wanted to bring this information to you tonight, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you very much for this and all the other good work and projects you're involved with in the city. And any flyers, anything you want on our news blast, please share with us, and we'll get those out and everything, anything we can do. And when we get closer, we'll remind everybody of the dates. So Pam, thank you very, very much. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to a presentation by Director of Planning and Redevelopment, Michelle Alonso, for an overview of the city's ADU ordinance.
Good eve, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I've been asked tonight to do an overview of our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The city passed this ordinance, it's actually two ordinance, two parts, almost a year ago to encourage more forms of housing in the city. So in case you don't know what is an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, it's typically thought of as like a granny flat or a cottage in the back of a lot. But we do have a broader definition. It's an independent residential dwelling unit located in same lot as standalone or also within a single-family home. An ADU can be, you can do the conversion in your own house or in a structure at the rear of your property or any portion behind the main house. So ADUs, as I had given this presentation a year ago, we, we talk about a soft density. The idea of the ADU is that it's not a full two-family, that it's supposed to be density that is not as noticeable, that there's an increase in density. And thus, we, this ordinance that we adopted has a lot of regulations. And one of the reasons we did this is, again, to increase the type of housing in the city. It's, we call it affordable with a little a, not a big A, because the impact is, is smaller than, for example, a deed-restricted affordable unit. And it's also, as you'll see in my presentation, unless you take a subsidy from the city, you don't have to have an affordable unit in your ADU. You can rent it out to any tenant with some caveats. Here's an illustration to show you what is, we commonly think of as an ADU. So last year, we amended our zoning ordinance, Chapter 30, to put the ADU as a permitted use. And you can, again, have it as a small structure in the back of your yard. You can convert your garage, or you could actually add a unit to your house. Although most inquiries we've had has been for the standalone unit. It's supposed to be its own standalone unit and that it will have its own separate entrance. And some of the regulations in Chapter 30 is that it cannot be bigger than the main house. You're only allowed one per property. Only properties with one and two-family homes in the R1, R2, R3, B District, Stars and Scared Site, and Washington Avenue redevelopment areas can have an ADU. There are supposed to be the same residential standards as the main house. In other words, if you walk in it, it has full plumbing and finishes as a rentable unit that would have a certificate of occupancy. And it can't be more than 20 feet in height. Essentially, you can't be taller than two stories if it's a standalone. You have to go through the normal process you would for any form of construction in the city. You need to come to my office, planning and redevelopment, with a zoning permit, and afterwards, you would apply to the building department for construction permits. You can't subdivide your unit from your main house, from your property. It all has to be one. You have to maintain your parking on-site, and in addition to your parking requirement for your main house, you have to provide one parking space per ADU. You can't exceed the building and the coverage requirements for the property, and part of that goal along with it can't be bigger than the main house is, again, that soft density that the districts retain their housing character. And it also can't be in front of the main house. It has to be behind the main house. So that's the zoning component of it. We have a second component to it, which is our regulatory component, and that's found in Chapter 13 of our municipal code. For your ADU, you would need an annual certificate from code enforcement. Your, this is the biggest, the biggest regulation. Your ADU nor your main structure can be a short-term rental. We're looking before, to create more rentals for residents here in the city, so you would have to have at least a six-month lease with a tenant. And the property has to be owner-occupied, and you have to be the principal resident. You would demonstrate this ownership, the same with a driver's license and a bank statement, and you would be inspected annually by code enforcement, your unit, to ensure that you're complying with our regulations. If you do choose to do an affordable unit, and affordable unit means deed-restricted for 10 years, you can receive a subsidy from the city. Depending on the income of the person you're renting the unit to depends on how much subsidy you can get. If you're going to lease to a moderate-income person, $20,000 subsidy; low-income, $30,000; very-low, $35,000. Now, one of the biggest things, if you do choose to take the subsidy, is that you, you don't really have a choice in your tenant, that someone who is on the affordable housing waiting list will be assigned to your property, to your unit. And you're going to have to do annual reporting. But again, it's, it'll be deed-restricted for 10 years, but after 10 years, you actually would, you would have a two-family home. That's part of the give-back if you do the deed-restricted affordable housing. There's no parking requirement if you do the affordable unit, and one of the things as an incentive as well is the property does not have to be owner-occupied. We would also waive some of the fees that are common with new construction, the co-residential development fees, sanitary sewer fees, the zoning permit fee. You would enter into a contract with the city as part of receiving the subsidy. If you, if you're not renting it to an income-qualified person, the money has to be refunded to the city. And then funding would be paid in four parts, as listed above. 25 with the deed restriction, 25% for your first construction permit, 25 for the certificate of occupancy for the unit, and 25% when the lease is executed with the initial prospective tenant. So now that I've laid out very quickly, very basically, the groundwork, how do I construct an ADU? If you're interested in constructing an ADU, your very first step is you would consult an architect or a design professional, like a, a design-build firm. They would give you, take a look at our zoning, say, oh, you meet the criteria, or you don't meet the criteria. They would also give you a cost estimate of both soft costs and hard construction costs. So once you've dedicated to doing the actual construction, you'd file a zoning permit with my office. You would check your project against the regulations. If everything is in order, we would sign off on it, and then you would file for your construction permits. And that would include plumbing, electrical, overall construction, framing, depending if you're converting a garage or you're doing a new standalone structure, a foundation permit. Then you would complete your final inspections for occupancy, and then you would file for your ADU certificate with code enforcement, and then you would file for a certificate of occupancy for a tenant to move into your unit. If you, even if you don't lease it and you're going to have a family member live there, you would still do this procedure. Hurdles to an ADU. The number-one hurdle, not just for us, nationwide, is financing. Current interest rates have made people hesitant to use a home equity loan, a second mortgage to finance an ADU. It's very difficult to get an outright construction loan, but these are just some ways you can finance it. Some people are able to just finance it with their own finances. Garages that do not have foundations. So you may have a garage in your backyard, and it may not have a foundation, it may sit just on the ground, that's called a sill plate. Some older homes have that, the garages don't have foundations. You would have to lift the garage and put a foundation in, or knock the garage down, put a foundation, build a new structure. You have to run sewer and electric through your backyard. And for the sewer, that may, means digging up your backyard. Electric, it can be above-ground, connecting to your main house, it could be underground, it could come in off the street. It depends on every property situation. Increase in property taxes. So you would not be taxed for an additional unit, but you will be taxed for improvements, as if you did improvements to the main structure. Like if you put in an additional bathroom in your house, you will have seen increase in your value, increase in your taxes. The same thing with an ADU. It would be treated that way as if it was an improvement, but not taxation as a separate unit. Construction. If you are going to go forward with an ADU, then some of the time constraints are things like proper construction, that you're engaging with a design professional that's going to give you an attractive design, something that you can afford. Nuisance. You have to be prepared to have construction occurring in your backyard. Those are the short-term issues. The longer-term and term issues is if you have an ADU in your backyard, it's no longer really your private space. You're sharing an entrance with your tenant, and that may be dissuading to some people who would consider doing an ADU. And finally, I put parking, because although I have not seen this yet, there may be some parcels that will have an issue providing the required parking, especially if you are a one-family home and you don't have parking now, and you don't have room for parking, even for the main house, that you're an undersized lot. So, but again, if you have an issue like parking or an issue with, with the setbacks or the coverage, you can make an application to the zoning board of adjustment. And again, if the benefits outweigh the detriments and it's a good, solid project, then you can be on a path to approval. And that's all I have. That was meant to be brief. I'm also, I should have put my email up here, because you can find my email on the website. I'm Michelle Alonso@asburypark.gov. You can email me any questions. You can come meet with my staff if you are seriously debating installing an ADU. And also, you can ask questions, of course, at the microphone when public comment is up. Thank you.
Michelle, just so people, just for my edification, there aren't, we're one of five municipalities that have ADUs or even less than that?
No, it's been increasing.
Oh, it has been?
Right. And I have to say, my own, my own town that I live in, which has had an ADU ordinance on the books now, probably one of the longer ones for about six years, finally are getting their first permits for ADUs.
Okay.
And again, I think the biggest obstacle has been the financing.
Okay.
But maybe someone will prove me wrong and tell me about some other obstacle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Yep.
Ready?
Yep.
Dan Smith, 1119 Sunset. I have a question on the ADU.
Okay, Michelle.
Actually, two questions. One, if it's a non-conforming structure and you have to tear it down to reconstruct it, can you put it on the property line?
No, you have to meet, you have to meet the zoning code for accessory structure. So it's three and five.
Okay. Then I don't have a second question.
Thank you, Dan.
Don't start the clock yet for one minute. Also, one of the questions that we, that I got consistently over the last couple of months was, could people, provided they have the foundation from the garage, can they buy one of these tiny houses and put that in their backyard? Okay, so that, if you, if you could, and if you're, wonderful, because that is a consistent question I've got.
Yes, as long as you have a foundation and you can put it on and you meet the setback requirements, yes. It'd be a prefab.
Okay, well, that was most of my question. The second question is just sort of two, two, two minor comments, just hopefully constructive comments. One is, honestly, I don't really need your subsidy, but I don't want to be forced to take the first tenant down that, that I'm given. So maybe if you give us an option of taking one of the first three tenants, because there's always the point of if you have a tenant that is somehow unruly, doesn't pay, doesn't whatever, it's very difficult, and we don't, no one wants to evict anybody, right? So it would be good to offer people an option on the tenant that, that you take, right? If it's an affordable or very affordable. Happy to have affordable, happy to have very affordable, happy to have very low income, but just don't want to be forced to take the first person down the road. Second minor thing is, not sure why it needs to be inspected every year. Not that I worry about it being inspected, but Asbury Park is wonderful, and I know actually most of the code, almost all the code people. Sometimes you get a code person on a good day, sometimes you get a code person on a bad day, and sometimes they can do whatever they want. So not sure why it's actually necessary to have code come every single year.
Let me address the first question.
Sure.
The, the tenant portion is not our regulation. It, it has to do with us getting credit as affordable housing. So that it's, that's the case with all deed-restricted affordable housing in the state, and that you have, like, we can't, if we're going to participate in the affordable housing program, then we have to do, follow those state regulations. So that's only if you take the subsidy, because...
Well, don't, I don't care about the subsidy.
Oh, then...
For example, I, I have Section 8 people, right?
Not Section 8.
Got it. Okay.
So no, this is, this is affordable, count it as an affordable housing unit, but, so if Section 8, you don't follow that and you're not applying for the subsidy. You can rent to whoever you want, as long as it's a long-term lease, if you don't take the subsidy.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carrie Valines, and I live at 703 First Avenue with my partner Rich. And I had, well, two questions and some feedback. Has anybody built an ADU yet or applied to build, build an ADU?
No. So that's the thing. I was saying that we've had some inquiries, and some of them have been serious, and I anticipate they're going to apply for permits soon, but no one has applied for one yet.
Okay. So I just wanted to give my personal feedback, because it was at the homeowners association meeting last night, it was, feedback was encouraged. I was excited about building an ADU, but we have a three-family, so we're not able to. And we do rely on our rental income for, for, to pay the property taxes and the mortgage. My understanding is because we're non-conforming, our neighborhood was zoned for multifamily until, I think until 2017. Now we're non-conforming, so, because it's, we're zoned for a single-family house now. So my understanding is we would have to turn our house into a single-family house in order to apply to build an ADU in our garage. And I'm guessing, wondering, is that true?
Yes and no. If you were going to apply for a permit as of right, if you feel you have a good case, like you could provide the parking and you can, it's not going to affect the character of the neighborhood, you can apply to the zoning board of adjustment for variance. Not a guarantee you're going to get it. You have to demonstrate your case that, again, it's a benefit to the neighborhood. But yes, we, at the time, we had, you, we had, various people had said that they wanted this applied to multifamily, but... this applied to multifamily, but very few of the multifamilies here in the city can actually provide the parking. And also about, yeah, that's, and also about our ability to also regulate it as well. I really feel like your situation's an anomaly compared to who's called and inquired. So again, if you think you have a good, you have a good case for an ADU, then you can make the application. But I have some zoning board members here, there's no guarantee that you're going to get it. They're going to weigh the benefits to the detriments and what your impact on the neighborhood would be.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my suggestion was going to be, maybe you, maybe you would consider allowing people with three, with three or more units to apply if, if there's an issue with not that many people applying to build ADUs.
I really, and again, I, not to say you're the anomaly, but, you know, many multifamilies here in the city are not owner-occupied. So that's, that's part of it as well, but we'll take into consideration. We definitely will. Okay, thank you.
Just so everybody knows, this is the public portion for anything and everything, not just ADU. So yeah, I don't want people to think like, I appreciate you taking the ADUs first, but you can talk about anything and everything now.
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle. You may still get more questions if you want to add.
Good evening. Joe Sumiro, 1326 Locust Drive. Relatively new to Asbury, came here in the summer of 2022. My wife and I downsized, and it's been real successful. We love it here. Taxes, little bit of an issue. Spent today over in Freehold discussing that. We've had a 62% increase in our taxes since we moved here. And from what I understand, the average house has only went up 38%, so that delta seems quite large. And eventually may dissuade us from wanting to stay here. We looked to retire here, you know, spend our, rest of our years here, spend our money here, but it's tough. And so I started to do a little research, and I don't really have any questions, just some comments based on research I did, and I'd love to hear how it all ties into our taxes here. So everybody probably knows there's about 15,500 people here, actually going up last year. What I didn't know is there's actually 8,650 residences here, which means we only have 1.9 people in each residence, which is the lowest of any of our counterparts. So if you compare us to the Tri-City or Neptune, they're all significantly higher. And if we actually increase that number to the average of 2.4, we would only need 6,200 homes to take care of all the people we have here in our town. So part of it I look at is maybe the DNA of the neighborhood has changed for the worse and the tax base is now putting an extra load on a certain portion of the town. So yeah, I thought those were some pretty interesting statistics. I'd love to hear what you think about all that. We also have 87% rental rates, so there's a 13% occupancy and a vacancy rate, and 69% of the people here are rentals. So that's a big tell when you're trying to build a neighborhood of people. I don't know if you have any comments about that?
Yeah, well, the, thank you for the information. So you're saying there's 8,600 residencies?
That's correct. Eight, eight, six, fifty, exactly.
Okay, does that include the Three Towers, the Housing Authority? Because...
I mean, that came off census and EP and Jersey data.
Okay, but I think it includes Asbury Towers, which is several hundred, which is one building.
Yes, I think...
The Housing Authority, which is hundreds of units, which is, you know, five or six buildings. Philip Seaview Towers, which is hundreds of units. And I'm not disputing, I'm just, I look into that myself and we have an, we have an excellent tax assessor, Mike Delray, who's accessible anytime with any other questions you have. And I'll ask him tomorrow, how it breaks down.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nancy Sedano, 1004th Avenue. I was here to ask a question that keeps getting answered differently from depending on who you hear, is whether or not the pilot for 1201 has been negotiated as yet?
No.
It has not? Okay. I understand that this pilot will arise out of a negotiation between the developer and the city's consultant. The developer will confidentially share budget and revenue information to make a case for any requested reduction from a standard tax assessment. Can you share whether this negotiation has commenced or where it is in the process?
It hasn't started for the process, for the development as planned now.
Okay. Given that the developer is receiving a significant density bonus and will be able to build dozens more market rate units than under standard zoning, will the council and negotiator consider this considerable additional revenue in evaluating the value and term of the pilot?
Yes, we'll consider everything, and our negotiator is one of the best in the state, if not the country, and he looks for every penny. So it's based on pro formas and everything, and he'll drive a hard bargain.
While the detailed content of the pilot negotiations is confidential, I'd request that the council please put some non-confidential, high-level findings in the record that provide support for the amount and term of the pilot. Putting these findings in the record would go a long way in assuring taxpayers that the developer is meeting the but-for standard, that is, the abatement is truly a necessity, and that there are tangible costs and reasons for what should be an at-most small abatement.
Anything that can be shared will be shared. It'll be 100% transparent.
I'd also like to recommend that if any nominal abatement is granted, it be for no more than 15 years. Any longer period than this makes it impossible to predict real estate finance climate, interest rates, revenue climate, operational costs, and of course, the state of the city. There could always be a clause in the agreement where the parties are mutually invited back to the table to try to reach terms again in 15 years. But that any obligation is no longer, any longer than this would likely outlast whatever burden of proof has been met in the pilot negotiation. The abatement is not likely defensible for a longer period than 15 years. So I know we've always, all we've ever heard is 30 years for pilots. Is there the possibility of making a pilot shorter? And would that be a consideration? Are we strictly dealing with the 30-year pilot?
In past years, there's been 10 and 15-year pilots, so it is a possibility. We haven't gotten there yet, so I can't give you an honest answer.
But ongoing negotiations will be made transparent along the process?
What can be made transparent, yes, but I mean, we can't violate, you know, their financials or anything like that. But absolutely, anything that can be shared will be shared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Madeline Monaco, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I've been away for a while, but I've heard a lot of different things about whether or not See Here Now is coming back in September or whenever this year, and I just wondered if you had an update on what's happening with that?
We're in the final stages of negotiating a new contract.
Okay. So it's moving forward in negotiations? You're feeling positive about it?
Correct.
Okay. And will it be, if it does happen, will it be in the same location or will it be in a different part of the city? Can't say yet.
It's negotiations going on. I wouldn't want to say anything, but it's not moving, if it's moving a little bit, it's not moving much.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sue McKyes from, on behalf of Food and Water Watch, I wanted to confirm that you have supported this Superfund Act by resolution. Is that correct?
Resolution 122 is going to be named after you tonight when we vote on it. Resolution 122 is on the agenda because of your request two weeks ago, so it is on tonight's agenda. It's number 122. Everybody play that lottery, you got an hour to get it in. And thank you for bringing it to our attention, and yes, it will be passed tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for your support and let you know that we'll be going to Trenton on March 10th, if anybody's interested, to hopefully move that out of committee up for a vote. Thank you very much.
Okay, and if you need a copy of the resolution, you get in touch with Anthony, the clerk, and he can give you a certified copy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kitty Minervini, 1012 Fifth Avenue. Just want to comment about 1201 Memorial, obviously, and since it's gone on deaf ears about how big it's going to be and how dense it's going to be and how many units it's going to be, and you're going to approve it, I'm sure. So it doesn't really matter where the parking enters or exits on Memorial, on Fourth, on Fifth, doesn't really matter. The bottom line is, there's going to be a lot of traffic. Sunset Plaza, right across from there, is always packed with people with all the businesses. They're pretty much full now. There's parking that's coming all the way down Fifth. Would you consider giving the residents that live in that area parking permits? And are, would you charge us for that? Would it be something that the city can give those residents that live there parking permits? Because it's just going to get worse. We all know that. You know that, and something needs to be done, something. Maybe you could be proactive on that.
Okay, well, every, the first Wednesday of every month at 5:30 in this chamber is the parking committee meeting and...
Yeah, but this would be as part of a concession with 1201 Memorial specifically.
No, we're not going to like just nitpick and everything. You can bring an idea to the parking committee, like you bring it to the council tonight.
Would it be something that the council would support?
Bring it to the parking committee first, then we'll go from there, because that's how we've been operating with the parking committee.
Okay, but I'm just asking you, would you support something like that?
I can't say I'm going to support something when I don't know the parameters of it.
Would you consider it? I'm asking, we're talking about parking, there's parking permits on, near the beach for residents.
I'd consider anything, Kitty. Again, if you want to come, and you don't have to come.
Why do we, why do we pay for them? Why do we pay for park, why can't that just be included in the taxes?
But a parking place in front of your house?
Yes.
There might be laws against it, I'm not sure, but that's why I'm saying...
No, you put a sticker on a resident parking pass.
Something that was brought up last night at the homeowners association meeting, we said we'd look into it, we advise everybody to come to the parking committee meeting. You don't have to, you can send an email to James Banana with your concerns, and it'll still be addressed if you're not there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If you have nobody else, I'm going to make a motion to close.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public participation is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting and regular meeting minutes for the February 12, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Any second?
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now onto individual resolutions. Resolution 2025, 110, resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 111, resolution approving special event applications.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 112, resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for 2025 budget.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 113, resolution to refund overpaid municipal charges for various properties.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 114, resolution of the City of Asbury Park making application to the local finance board seeking authorization for not to exceed $20 million redevelopment area bonds to finance the construction and installation of certain infrastructure improvements within the portion of the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area pursuant to NJSA 48,12A-29A3 and 48,12A-67G.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 115, resolution authorizing execution of a shared services agreement with the Borough of Rumson for technical rescue services for confined space entry.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 116, resolution authorizing the annual renewal of vector scheduling software for the fire department.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 117, resolution authorizing the emergency Wesley Lake outfall repairs needed.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 118, resolution authorizing professional services to the Ocean County Police Academy for Class II Special Law Enforcement Police Training.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 119, resolution authorizing professional service contract for state police accreditation maintenance.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes, and this is the second year of a three-year agreement?
Yes, correct. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025, 120, resolution authorizing professional services to Celebrite for police training.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025, 121, resolution amending, resolution 2024, 527, authorizing the submission of an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for Enterprise Zone Assistance Funds for the Asbury Park UEZ Program Administrative Expenses for Fiscal Year 2025.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution...
One second.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
One second. Here's 122.
Resolution 2025-122, resolution supporting petting legislation, Senate Bill 3545, Assembly Bill 4696, which would impose liability on large fossil fuel companies for certain climate change-related damages.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to open the meeting for public comment on ordinance 2025-1?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on ordinance 2025-1 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Your comments may only be about ordinance 2025-1.
Kitty Minervini, 1012 Fifth Avenue. I, I have a question. I still just don't understand, when Sunset Plaza has all those parking spaces, and they're constantly doing this, right?
Distrained from the ordinance. All we can talk about now.
Oh, I can't ask, okay.
It's not my law, it's state law.
I understand.
All we can talk about is the ordinance on the table.
Okay, so I guess I can't ask this question. I'm sorry. What do you mean?
Others can get up and talk.
I'm just confused about the traffic study saying that Fifth Avenue.
This has nothing to do with the traffic study either.
Okay, yeah, I don't think I can ask that question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Scully, 1307 Fourth Avenue. So you said it has nothing to do with the, the traffic study, but your consultant just brought that up on the record. So, is, is she referring to the traffic study that was done at Second and Memorial?
That was done between the hours of 3:00 and 4:00? Second and Memorial?
No. First and Memorial, it wasn't done at Fourth or Fifth and Memorial, correct?
Did she bring it up?
She did.
It's not correct. The traffic study referenced, or studied, the, the three frontages of this property, which is Memorial, Fourth, and Fifth.
And when was that study done?
Prior to us voting on it, Beth, wasn't it?
I would hope so.
Yes, it was done.
I trust you all.
In June 2024, June 11th, it was dated.
And that was done on Fourth and Fifth and Memorial?
Yeah, it studied the, the project as a whole, including its three frontages.
And was that study funded by the city, or was it funded by the developer?
Funded by the developer.
Okay. Has the city undertaken any traffic study on its own?
The city didn't do a traffic study, but what it did do, when it received that, that document, is it shared it with its traffic professionals to determine if they had any, any concerns about it, or felt that it needed correcting in any way.
And did those professionals give the board an opinion?
Uh, no, they did not appear before the council. I coordinated with them so that I could report to the council.
So, just to be clear, the professionals looked at the study that was done by the developer, didn't give a written opinion as to that study, but relayed something to you, and you relayed that to the, to the council?
That's correct. I worked with the city's other professionals.
Okay, and is that normal, or would the professionals of the city give an opinion since they are traffic engineers, I'm assuming?
I don't think there's a typical process. I mean, before, planning board and zoning boards, developers provide traffic studies for most any major project. And in that case, often, board professionals issue a report because that's part of, it's part of their role, serving the board as part of that site plan application. Here, where we have a rezoning or redevelopment plan amendment, it doesn't have the same process where professionals issue memos of, of their various findings, like they do for a planning board. So there's no typical process. As my work for the, for the council here, as well as for in any other, many other municipalities that I work in, I commonly coordinate between, between perhaps a developer's proposal, the municipality's staff and professionals, and myself, in, myself, in order to provide advice or updates to the governing body. And what we had here in this city for the 1201 Memorial Site is no different than processes that I've, I've seen take place dozens of times throughout the state.
Thank you. I guess my only question for the.
Hold on one second, you have plenty of time. I thought the city professionals, being the planning, transportation planner, and the city engineer, did give the council their opinions on the parking study.
Yes, they did.
They did.
Yes.
They did.
If I'm mistaken, I apologize.
That's okay.
I, I guess my question to the board is, is, we put our trust in, in you as elected officials, and I think it's just clear by this recent dialogue, that there's some miscommunication between the council, and, and no offense, the council's professional, but yet, we're sitting here, and you're going to vote on this, when there is clear, clear evidence by the record right, right now, within the last two minutes, that there's a miscommunication between the council and its professionals. I urge you to postpone this vote until your professional and the council has, has seen all the necessary documents. Obviously, you've seen an opinion from the, from the council and the town's professionals, but your planning professional, who you've, you've hired as a consultant, hasn't. So how can you, how can you sit here and earn the trust of the residents to vote on this tonight? I urge you to postpone it until at least your own consultant has seen whatever, whatever opinion the city's professionals have given the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you detail the process next that would happen after, say, you pass this tonight, and it goes back to the planning board? What happens there, and then does it come back to you after that again?
So, if the, if the council votes in favor of the redevelopment plan amendment, this means that the developer can proceed to their, to their planning board site plan application, and can have a dialogue with the planning board about where the access location should be on Fourth and Fifth. Voting yes facilitates that discussion. Voting against the redevelopment plan amendment means that the developer can proceed to the planning board for their site plan approval, and may only propose access on, on Fourth. Thank you. So, a vote in favor of the application gives that flexibility between Fourth and Fifth. A vote against the amendment does not.
And if the public wanted to stay involved in the process, we would now track this with the planning board?
Yes, absolutely. So, essentially, regardless of how the, the council votes, the applicant, or excuse me, the developer can proceed and request site plan approval at the planning board. So to members of the public that are interested in how this project is going to proceed in the approval process, unless the matter is not voted on this evening, the next steps will occur at the planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to reframe my question or comment, now that I understand. Please consider getting all the information that you need to make the right decision to represent us. If that means getting another traffic study by someone other than the developer, doesn't that just seem strange to you guys? Come on. Seriously. I mean, he's the developer. Of course, he's going to get what he wants. Just think about that, seriously. Thank you.
Let me just say, thank you, Kitty. Let me just say, a traffic planner has a license through the state of New Jersey, just like a planner does, an engineer does. So I mean, it is not unusual for the developer to hire the plant.
It is important.
No, 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 you're not going to interrupt me. You can speak again. So that is not unusual, that happens in every town in America. Now, that guy is not going to lose his license over getting a lousy $10,000 from some developer, because he'll go bankrupt, and he'll never be hired by anybody else again. So you're saying, or alluding, maybe it could be screwed in the developer's favor because he's paying them. Well, that could go for a planner, an engineer, and everything, and that's just not the way this country works. I mean, they have to protect their licenses. Okay, you can get back up to the mic. Yeah, you can get back up to, you want to, go ahead.
But if you have a serious diagnosis from the doctor, you don't just say, "Yeah, cut me open." You go to another doctor and get a second opinion, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to say that, I mean, I'm like, like speaking, I, I respect all the work you guys do.
Can we have your name and address for the record, sir, please?
On 101 Masse Point Road, but I also have a business on, I'm building a business on Springwood Avenue.
Your name for the record?
Uh, David Duncan.
Thank you.
And, and so, I mean, you're talking about this, this, I think, I mean, I work in medicine, it's all about ethics. And, and for me, it sounds extremely unethical for, for you to hire a person, or to be hired a person to do the, the, the traffic study, that's, that's the actual developer. And that may be, you may feel that that's, I mean, in medicine, it happens all the time that, that people hire lawyers, and then they get a next job and a next job, because they're actually known by the developers as somebody can help them with their, so he, if he helps a developer, then the developer gives him another job, and then other developers are trying to pass things. So actually, it does work like that, unfortunately. So I think it makes it much clearer and more ethical to clearly have somebody that's separated from the developer, and will be happy. And I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be done.
Thank you.
See anybody else, motion to close?
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Yeah, so I think that's important to note, that our profession.
Move it.
Close.
Move to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-1?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-7, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of the cost of certain wastewater, stormwater, roadway, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements constructed on or befitting Block 4105, Lot 1.01, Block 4105, Lots 4, 5, and a portion of Lot 3, 150 Fifth Avenue on the city tax map, which are located within the Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment Area, and establishing a mechanism for payment of the costs thereof, with the public hearing date of March 26, 2025.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2025-1, ordinance amending the 1201 Memorial Drive Redevelopment Plan for property located at 1201 Memorial Drive, Block 203, Lot 5. Planning Consultant Beth McManus is going to give a brief overview of the ordinance.
Thank you. That should be better. Okay, so folks, again, my name is Beth McManus, I'm a planning consultant for the city. This, this redevelopment plan amendment is for the 1201 Memorial Site. That is, just for the record, it's a property that's about 1.55 acres. It's about 1.55 acres. It has frontage on Memorial as well as Fourth and Fifth Avenues. There is an existing adopted redevelopment plan that was adopted in late June last year, June 20, June 26. And that redevelopment plan permits up to 130 housing units on the site, including 20% affordable. And it also permits a modest amount of commercial development along Memorial Drive, less than 2,000 square feet. This amendment to that adopted redevelopment plan really does one thing. And it gives additional and specified flexibility to the access location, so the, the vehicle access location. Right now, the adopted redevelopment plan requires two-way access on Fourth Avenue, period. The proposed amendment would give flexibility to the planning board to determine whether, where, excuse me, where two-way access on Fourth Avenue would be, whether access also belonged along Fifth, and it would permit the planning board to decide whether it was going to permit one-way or two-way access, so essentially in or out, or both. And it would not permit access on Memorial Drive. And so this redevelopment plan amendment has come to be because there was public concern about the amount of traffic along Fourth and, and the increase, the public impact. And so the council had considered that, really in context with an access evaluation, essentially a traffic or access study that had been prepared by a traffic engineer, who found that Fourth Avenue was best, Fifth Avenue was, I guess, second best, also provided safe and efficient, although less so, but also found that Memorial Drive was the least safe and least efficient access point. And thus, the plan amendment gives flexibility to the planning board to determine whether access belongs on Fourth or Fourth and Fifth, and, and exactly how that access should be designed. And that is the, that is the only change set forth in this plan amendment. It just simply gives that flexibility to the planning board to review that decision as part of the developer's site plan application that must be made before any construction can begin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to open the meeting for public comment on ordinance 2025-1?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on ordinance 2025-1 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Your comments may only be about ordinance 2025-2. All right, motion to close?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-3?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
No.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-4, ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for 1001 First Avenue, City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, Block 401, Lots 10 through 13. And with that, brief overview from Beth McManus.
Good evening again, Beth McManus, planning consultant for the city. So this is, this is a redevelopment plan amendment for 1001 First. This is a property that's got frontage along Langford, as well as First and Second Avenues. It's currently a vacant property. A redevelopment plan was originally adopted in March, March 2018, March 14. And since then, the project has gone through some pretty substantial changes. So in March 2018, the redevelopment plan that was adopted set forth, permitted construction of about 86 housing units and up to about 4,000 square feet of commercial space. And it did include affordable housing as well. Subsequent to the 2018 plan adoption, the project did not proceed. It did not proceed until, until the property was sold to another developer. They approached the city to, to talk about potential changes to the redevelopment plan. And at that time, the redevelopment plan, the proposed redevelopment plan amendment from the developer had looked for up to 124 units on the property, and they had also included some significant changes to architecture, reduced, or excuse me, increased the density as part of that, decreased some of the front yard and upper story setbacks, et cetera. Once they approached the city, the city began negotiating to determine if there was a way to move the project forward in, in a manner that was acceptable. And the result is this redevelopment plan amendment that is on the, the council's agenda for this evening. The current plan addressed many of the, or adjusted many of the proposed changes from the developer, such that the density decreased from that 124 approximate units that I had indicated they came back to talk to the city with, it's down 20 units to 104 units. And so this redevelopment amendment change is really about increasing another 18 units on the property. In addition to that, there have been significant changes to the front yard setbacks to increase them, and there are also significantly more architectural and design standards set forth in the redevelopment plan, including concept plans of how the site, as well as how the building would be designed. And so ultimately, what we have here for a comparison between what was adopted in 2018 versus what's for discussion tonight, there are, let's see, an increase in the permitted housing units from about 86 to the 104 right now. There's also an elimination. authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with K-Hof Nanyan's Delta Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC concerning property located at block 4306, lots 1 through 8, on the city tax map within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area and granting a tax exemption. With that, brief overview from Michelle Alonso.
This is the financial agreement for the Delta Townhouse Project that is the agreement that allows us to, we enter into a 30-year pilot.
Do we have a motion to open the meeting for the public comment on ordinance 2025-3? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm confused. This is Dottie Evans on 1706 Park Avenue. I'm hearing 30-year pilot, but didn't you just say that the most pilots are only 15 years?
For the waterfront, because of the 2002 agreement, the pilots for any condominiums, for sale units, have to be 30 years and have to be given. We cannot stop, we cannot change them, we cannot do anything with them. It's a legal document that cannot be unilaterally changed. Both sides would have to negotiate and change. They got the best of the deal, they're not going to change it, so our hands are tied.
So where is it, the 15 year? Is that other area outside?
That could be outside of the waterfront, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No, thank you.
Do we have a motion to close the public here on ordinance 2025-3?
Motion to close, second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-3?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
No.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-4, ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for 1001 First Avenue, city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, block 401, lots 10 through 13, and with that, brief overview from Beth McManus.
Good evening again, Beth McManus, planning consultant for the city. So this is a redevelopment plan amendment for 1001 First. This is a property that's got frontage along Langford as well as First and Second Avenues. It's currently a vacant property. A redevelopment plan was originally adopted in March, March 2018, March 14th, and since then, the project has gone through some pretty substantial changes. So in March 2018, the redevelopment plan that was adopted set forth permitted construction of about 86 housing units and up to about 4,000 square feet of commercial space, and it did include affordable housing as well. Subsequent to the 2018 plan adoption, the project did not proceed. It did not proceed until the property was sold to another developer. They approached the city to talk about potential changes to the redevelopment plan. And at that time, the redevelopment plan, the proposed redevelopment plan amendment from the developer had looked for up to 124 units on the property, and they had also included some significant changes to architecture, reduced, or excuse me, increased the density as part of that, decreased some of the front yard and upper story setbacks, et cetera. Once they approached the city, the city began negotiating to determine if there was a way to move the project forward in a manner that was acceptable, and the result is this redevelopment plan amendment that is on the council's agenda for this evening. The current plan addressed many of the, or adjusted many of the proposed changes from the developer, such that the density decreased from that 124 approximate units that I had indicated they came back to talk to the city with. It's down 20 units to 104 units. And so this redevelopment amendment change is really about increasing another 18 units on the property. In addition to that, there have been significant changes to the front yard setbacks to increase them, and there are also significantly more architectural and design standards set forth in the redevelopment plan, including concept plans of how the site as well as how the building would be designed. And so ultimately, what we have here for a comparison between what was adopted in 2018 versus what's for discussion tonight, there are, let's see, an increase in the permitted housing units from about 86 to the 104 right now. There's also an elimination of the non-residential or the commercial space on the property. There are significantly increased first floor as well as upper story setbacks, and one thing I want to note is the front yard setbacks actually increased significantly as opposed to when the plan was originally sent to the planning board as a result of planning board changes, and so we have greater front yard setbacks right now along First and Second in order to keep a nicer view down these two streets. And as I said before, we have additional, substantial additional building design standards and also now required five-foot buffer along the rear property. Some of the things that did not change are the parking ratio that continues to be the same as set forth in 2018 at 1.2 spaces per unit. There's no change to the affordable housing setback, excuse me, affordable housing set aside that remains at 20%, but as a result of the increase in density, the project is going to go from 17 or 18 affordable units up to 21 affordable units. There's also no change to the building heights. One of the changes that will occur as a result of the elimination of the non-residential space, even accounting for the increase in housing units, is that the traffic trips, the vehicles along the roads are actually anticipated to go down as a result of the loss of commercial space. So while the plan increases the density, the anticipated traffic impact will actually be reduced as a result. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
And just so people know, again, this is not a pilot, this is a redevelopment plan. You just want to.
That's correct, yeah, there's been no, this is not a vote in favor of a pilot that would, if there's going to be a pilot on the project, that would be subject to future negotiations and future hearings.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to open the meeting for public comment on ordinance 2025-4?
Move to open, second.
All in favor? Public comment on ordinance 2025-4 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Your comments may only be about ordinance 2025-4.
Thanks. Hello, so Jordan Modell, 1001 Second Avenue, right across the street from the project. So first is, was there a traffic study done? And if so, is it made available?
Yeah, come on, back up.
Sorry, thank you.
The developer submitted a traffic impact analysis, and so the short answer to your question is yes. They submitted a traffic impact analysis to the city that was dated in October of 2024.
Okay, so us as residents, we've actually never seen that, to be able to discuss it as residents, so could I respectfully ask that we at least have time to review that? Because I don't know if it's been available. We certainly, as the building rep, we certainly have not seen it or know anything about it. So that would be excellent to at least be able to see. So thank you very much for that. And then the second thing is, the 86 units, if you know the neighborhood, that would totally, it's a tremendous addition to the neighborhood because from a parking standpoint, right, you have the two lower-income housing that have their own parking, but this would add another 86 cars or something when people are visiting, also outside. So anyway, bottom line, I'll shut up. Thank you if you can possibly see the traffic study, that's all.
The only thing, I'm sorry, the only thing I want to clarify is that this is, I would urge the council and the public to think about, this is not about 0 to 86 or 0 to 104, it's really from around 86 to 104. So it's just, the increase is really less than 20 units. I don't want to dismiss your concern, but just so we're all clear.
Understood.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Motion to close?
Move it, second.
All in favor? Do I have a, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-4?
Move it, second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-5, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Chapter 4 entitled General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park to amend special event fees.
Move it, second.
This is moving to open, yeah, to the public.
Yeah, this is pretty self-explanatory. If anybody has any questions, please go to the microphone. Motion to close?
I think she hears something.
What's the effective date on the DJ?
The what?
What? What's the effective date on that?
It has to wait 20 or 30 days.
20 days after.
20 days after this, yeah. Do you have no other questions? Motion to close?
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-5? Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
That is all for tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.